All right, it is 7:00 PM and I'd like to call this meeting to order. While this meeting is being held in person, we are also offering the option for the public to participate through Zoom if preferred. Instructions on how to participate virtually are included in the City Council Calendar item listed on the front page of MissionKS.org. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Robin, please call the roll.
Eden Chompsey, here, Wolltinghouse, Loudon, here, Ryer, Eric Schmid, Carpenter Davis, Josie.
Here.
All right, we do not have any public hearings this evening, so we will move into our special presentations. We have one special presentation tonight. Our first is a proclamation declaring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Mission. Domestic violence is a widespread, preventable, public health problem impacting all communities regardless of age, race, ability, identity, or socioeconomic status. Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an opportunity for citizens to learn about warning signs, prevention, and resources available for those experiencing domestic violence, and to show support for the organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy, services, and assistance to victims. Local organizations like Safe Home provide invaluable resources and a healing atmosphere where survivors of intimate partner abuse can gain inner strength, explore options, and be empowered to live a life free of abuse. I would particularly like to recognize Safe Home and all the other organizations working tirelessly to combat the epidemic of domestic violence in our region. If you are in need of help or in a dangerous situation, 24/7 resources and support are available at www.thehotline.org or by calling 1-800-799-7233. The Go Green Environmental Fair presentation that was previously listed on our agenda for tonight has been moved to a later meeting. We look forward to hearing from that committee in November. Excuse me. We do not have any items related to the issuance of notes and bonds this evening, so we will move into our consent agenda. Our consent agenda has four items tonight. Our council committees met on October 9th and fully discussed each of these items. The committees agreed that the items listed on our consent agenda are routine enough to be considered under a single motion. If a council member or member of the public would like an item removed from the consent agenda, they may request that at this time. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor, I move the City Council adopt the consent agenda as printed items 4A through 4D.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Josie.
Aye.
Wolltinghouse.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Loudon.
Aye.
Eden Chompsey.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ryer.
Aye.
Carpenter Davis.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, we'll move into public comment. If any members of the public would like to make a comment on an item not included on our agenda, now would be the time. If you are participating through Zoom, please either add your comment in the chat feature and it will be read out loud, or note that you would like to speak and we will call on you shortly to make your comment verbally. Please remember your comments or questions are visible to everyone in the meeting. If you are part of our in-person group tonight, please raise your hand but stay seated and we will call on you to come to the lectern to make your comments. When you make your comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Also be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person. Justin, do we have anyone online? Anyone in person here tonight who'd like to make a comment? Seeing none, we will move into action items. We do not have any items coming forward from the Planning Commission tonight, so we will move into our committee reports. Councilmember Schmidt, will you please provide a report from the Finance and Administration Committee?
Absolutely. The Finance and Administration Committee met on October 9th and considered six items. The meeting minutes, 2025 Contract for Legislative Advocacy Services, 2024 STO UPOC adoption, and the Declaration of Surplus Equipment were approved under the consent agenda earlier tonight. A resolution calling for a public hearing to consider a TIF redevelopment project plan for property located at 5665 Foxridge, and a memorandum of understanding with Johnson County Government for EV charging stations will be considered under the regular agenda this evening. Item 7A, Resolution Calling for a Public Hearing to Consider a TIF Redevelopment Project Plan for Property Located at 5665 Foxridge. The Silvercrest Redevelopment Tax Increment Financing District is comprised of one parcel of property located at the southeast corner of 56th Street and Foxridge, addressed as 5665 Foxridge. This property has a one-story office building, approximately 40,000 square feet, that was built in 1970. Formerly the JCPenney Call Center, this building has been vacant for nearly two decades. Block Real Estate Services LLC submitted plans to the city in 2022 for the construction of a 300-plus unit multifamily development on the site. The preliminary development was considered and approved by the City Council in September of 2022. A final development plan was considered and approved by the Planning Commission in the spring of 2023. The approved development plans provide for a four-story multifamily building constructed on top of a concrete podium, podium parking structure. The development will have a mix of studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom apartments totaling 307 units in all. There will be an outdoor patio area with a pool, grill, game area, and seating. Indoor amenities will include a lounge, workout facility, leasing offices, and a multipurpose room. The development will take up the entire parcel with parking being located underneath the building. Block Real Estate Services LLC has made a formal request to the city for tax increment financing to assist with the redevelopment costs of this site, primarily site work including infrastructure, stormwater, and the podium parking structure. The only item for council consideration at this time is a resolution whose sole purpose is to set a public hearing for the November 20th City Council meeting to take public input on the requested use of TIF. Approval of any incentives would not be considered until the public hearing has been conducted, and the council has reviewed and analyzed information from the city's financial advisor, bond counsel, and staff. Staff and city's consultant team are reviewing the project's pro forma and other details and will bring forward a recommendation for any potential incentives in connection with the redevelopment project. A work session has been scheduled for October 30th to review the project in more detail, and it will also be scheduled as an action item on the November 6 Finance and Administration Committee meeting, all prior to the item moving forward for the public hearing on November 20th. Mayor, I move the City Council adopt the resolution setting a public hearing for 7:00 PM, November 20, 2024, to reconsider a substantial change to the Silvercrest Redevelopment Tax Increment Financing District and adopt a tax increment financing redevelopment project plan.
Right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll move into council discussion. Any council comments or questions? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Crane.
Aye.
Wolltinghouse.
Aye.
Josie.
Aye.
Loudon.
Aye.
Carpenter Davis.
Aye.
Ryer.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Eden Chompsey. Motion carries.
Item 7B, Memorandum of Understanding with Johnson County Government for EV Charging Stations. In 2023, the City of Mission worked collaboratively with Johnson County Climate Action KC and other local communities to pursue a carbon reduction grant funding opportunity for a regional pilot project to install electric vehicle charging stations throughout the county. The funding for the project would come from the Kansas Department of Transportation, with Johnson County Government acting as the primary grant recipient and the Mid-America Regional Council administering the grant itself. The grant application was successful and the governing body agreed during the 2024 budget process to participate in the project and allow for two EV charging stations to be installed. One would be installed at Broadmoor Park and the other at the Powell Community Center. The total estimated cost for the two charging stations is $228,503 with 80% of the cost, or $182,803, being covered by grant funding. The city's remaining estimate portion is $47,529, which includes the 1% fee from Mark to administer the grant. The city's portion would be split between the general fund and the Special Parks and Recreation Sales Tax Fund and was included in the 2025 budget. Once a vendor has been selected, construction is scheduled to begin in 2025. In total, the pilot project is seeking to install 32 EV charging stations throughout the county. Additional participating entities include Johnson County Parks and Recreation, the City of Overland Park, the City of Prairie Village, and the City of Roland Park. Mayor, I move the City Council approve the MOU with Johnson County Government to fund two EV charging stations in the City of Mission for a cost of $47,529.
Second. Right, we have a motion and a second. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any council comments or questions? Yeah, Ben?
Yeah, it's something I think I just would have liked to have asked a committee but forgot to. For these charging stations, what is the, what is the user's sort of fee structure going to look like and who's going to collect the revenue? And I know we haven't selected vendors, but do we know anything about that sort of landscape?
We don't specifically at this time, and so that'll be an option that we can kind of discuss next spring as they get going. What I can tell you is I know Overland Park does currently charge market rates at, uh, stations they already have, and they plan to do that as well as part of this project, but it is up to individual entities. It could be something the city covers entirely, or you could charge the market rate. There is that flexibility there.
So we, the idea being, we would install, own, operate, pay for the electricity, and charge whatever structure we see fit. Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
Yeah, Debbie?
It's the market rate right now for EV charging station.
I think it probably depends based on some of them are more rapid chargers than others and just there's probably a variety of structures. But we can, as we bring that forward, so we, you know, these aren't going to be installed until probably late in the 2025, so we'll have plenty of time next spring to kind of do some of that additional research and bring that back to you all for consideration.
Are there parameters on the grant that you have to have it completed by a certain date?
Well, they'll all be, they will be selecting a contractor to do all of the installation, and then I don't know in what order they will proceed with installation at the various 32 different locations. So, once they select that contractor and get that plan in place, I'm sure they will communicate when we could anticipate having our stations installed.
Right, any other comments or questions? All right. Does that conclude your report?
That does conclude my report.
All right.
Yes.
Oh, wait, wait, we need a vote, we need a vote. Sorry, I'm behind, behind tonight.
Yeah, not, not.
Sorry, any further comments or questions? Seeing none. Oh, yeah, Leah.
I just wanted to say that I'm excited that the City of Mission is participating in this. It kind of helps us get closer to our goals of, you know, less greenhouse gases.
Great. All right, seeing no further comments, Robin, please call the roll.
Ryer.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Josie.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Carpenter Davis.
Aye.
Loudon.
Yes.
Wolltinghouse.
Aye.
Eden Chompsey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, we'll try this again.
That really does. Yeah.
All right, thank you. Now, councilmember Ryer, will you please provide a report from the Community Development Committee?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Community Development Committee also met on October 9th and considered one item. The meeting minutes were approved under the consent agenda earlier tonight. No items will be considered under the regular, regular agenda this evening, and that concludes my report.
Okay, great. We do not have any unfinished or new business tonight, therefore we will move into our comments from the City Council. This is an opportunity for comments from our council members. Does anyone on the council have something they'd like to share this month? Yes, Trent?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is, I made this public on my Facebook page for council yesterday, but I would just like to announce that my wife and I have moved out, or we will be moving out of the city, and therefore I will be resigning my seat on this August body next month. And so what that means is this is the last meeting where I'll officially vote on items, but I will still be responding to emails. We're still going to have a Ward 1 meeting, and there's various liaisons and committee meetings still that I'll be a part of, but I'll have more comments next month about how I viewed my time on the body and how I appreciated working with you all, but just wanted to publicly announce that at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll say, we'll say more next month, but we'll miss you, Trent.
We'll miss you guys too.
I saw some hands down here. Yeah, Ben and Brian?
I just wanted to give some kudos to the Police Department. I've had a few comments from folks in the ward about some speed on Johnson Drive, speed issues on Johnson Drive and throughout the city, but I've noticed the traffic enforcement has been pretty visible. And certainly appreciate that and the efforts to, you know, especially to make our sort of core downtown area, continue to make that walkable and friendly to pedestrians and just safe for everybody. So I've noticed that lately and appreciate those efforts.
Yeah, Brian?
Uh, yeah, just a reminder for anyone watching that the Ward 3 quarterly meeting is tomorrow, October 17th, at the Community Center at 7:00 PM.
All right, yeah, Debbie?
An announcement, the Rushton Elementary School Fall Festival will be held on Friday, October 25th, from 5:30 to 8:00.
Yeah.
Just one more, since on the topic of award meetings, we did have a Ward 4 meeting on Thursday. On Thursday, not doing good with the dates on Thursday, but was very pleased that there was a positive response to the letter we sent out to all the residents, which is something new for us, and the turnout was really good. We had something like 17 folks there, so. Lot of, lot of good questions and comments and, you know, despite some, some scheduling issues and me basically doing the presentation twice, it was, it was worth it because we had folks turn out in pretty good numbers and good response to them as well. So thanks, everybody that came and appreciate the help from staff on that one.
Great. Yeah, Cheryl?
And I just want to say thank you to Ben for covering for me while I was at a town with the ward meeting because I heard from our community members that it went really quite well. Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
All right, next we have our council committee liaison reports. These reports allow the entire governing body to stay up to date with the various activities of the boards, commissions, and committees. First is Councilmember Loudon and Councilmember Wolltinghouse for Sustainability Commission.
Why don't you start and then I'll finish him?
Um, we, we met earlier this week. We had to change dates due to a certain baseball game and football game, which was, which was a good thing. So one of the things that we talked about was the treekeeping course. One of our members had taken the course. This is a course that's offered twice a year, I think once in Missouri, once on the Kansas side. It happened to be at Sylvester Powell. So he and his wife took it. It's, it's done by Bridging the Gap, which I'll mention again in a moment when we talk about the, the Tree Yourself, tree planting thing that we did. But it's, it's great to help people understand, you know, what trees to choose, how to plant them, how to keep them, and then people who have completed the course can volunteer to help plant trees with Bridging the Gap, which I thought was kind of fun. They get a little certification so that they can kind of be more experts when it comes to working with it, bridging the gap as they plant trees. We also partnered with Bridging the Gap to do our, our Tree Yourself program where the Sustainability Commission and Parks and Rec kind of came together. The goal was to sell 50 trees that were then planted in Mission. All trees were sold, and then 26 more were planted around the city, which is kind of exciting. So that's helps us to maintain our Tree City designation, which is always good. We also had a presentation of, of the, a little bit deeper into community, communities of all ages. And I think many of us are kind of new on here. We might have maybe a refresher on, on what that means, but it's basically looking at city planning and city decisions based through the lens of considering all ages. So that can look like maybe inviting high school age students to participate a little bit more in, in city government. And then thinking about our aging population. You know, the boomers are aging, and there's a lot of them. Not nearly as many millennials that'll be on their heels for the aging next, so we really do need to think about that when we're, you know, doing our, our planning, our comp plan, that sort of things. Mission is a gold level in the communities of all ages, which means that we have, have completed three different steps to get that designation. Age-friendly communities tend to have houses and buildings that are accessible to all people, regardless of age or ability. And there is an inclusion tool that is used when planning that Justin was going to send to the Sustainability Commission, but might send it to council members as well. It'd be kind of interesting to go through. And also, we talked about just how beneficial it is to use universal design to make spaces more accessible and more inclusive to people of all ages.
Yeah, that was an excellent recap. One item, two, from that presentation that I thought was interesting was they mentioned how ADA, a lot of times people will say, oh, well, you know, we're ADA compliant, and that's great, and that's required by law. But according to the framing of this, that's sort of the floor of where design principles can begin, and universal design is more of the ceiling and what, you know, the ideal would be. So that was kind of interesting for me because I've definitely been guilty of saying, oh, yeah, it's ADA compliant, you know, wash your hands and move on, but there's a little more to it than just that.
And one of the other things from this is that they found in, in, in creating community of all ages is that people really want to age at home. You know, a lot of times city will say, well, we're fine. We don't really have any, you know, old folks homes or, or, or older living facilities, so it doesn't really pertain to us. But again, we've got quite a few residents in our cities at all times of all ages, so we really do need to think about that and, and realize that people want to age at home, and so we need to do our best to make sure that they're able to do that with the resources that they need. And I'm all done.
All right, thank you. Next we have councilmembers Crane and Schmidt for Parks, Recreation, and Tree Commission.
Uh, I would actually like to point out that it's Gen X, I think, that's up next for advanced aging, not millennials, so if we can slow that down a little bit. Yeah.
How many generations can you offend one?
PRT update. Uh, we already mentioned, thank you, the, the, the Tree Yourself update, so that's, that's fantastic that, yeah, in addition to the 50 that were distributed, 26 were additionally planted by residents, so that's great. Did want to mention that the annual spooky walk is coming up on October 18th at Streamway Park. That's from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Show up, have fun. Some updates on park maintenance. Anderson Park has been resurfaced, new parking lot, restriped, looks great if you haven't been. And then Mohawk Park, the playground is progressing. Looks like it should be completed in November with a ribbon cutting to be set next month, so some exciting stuff coming through parks.
I was not at the Parks and Rec meeting, and I am so sorry about that. But I did, however, go over the weekend and kind of do a, kind of a synopsis around the neighborhoods to see what our parks look like with the fall, the leaves changing and everything. Not only did I acknowledge and notice that the maintenance was very well done on our parks, they look wonderful, but I also saw people walking with strollers, with dogs, with everything, and it kind of just reminded me of how fortunate we are to be in a small community where, you know, we see all the things that people just talk about on, in the big cities. And so I want to thank Penn for all the work that he does on Parks and Rec. I think it makes us all look really good. Thanks.
All right, next we'll hear an update from Councilmember Josie on the Mission Magazine editorial board.
Actually going to meet next week, I believe, but you should, you should have seen the, the latest issue hit your mailbox. Mine, got mine on Monday. I know you were, you were asking Laura. Really fantastic. There's, there's so many different, interesting articles of, of covering women in Mission and, and business ownership and leadership roles of all kinds. You know, even though I remember sitting in the committee and talking about all the examples, it was still impressive to see just how much we were able to pack in there, so. Great issue. If you haven't gotten it yet, pop in, you know, the City Hall, or I think several businesses, restaurants, shops have copies, so take a look.
I concur. Thank you.
And then finally, we have councilmember Carpenter Davis with Family Adoption Committee.
Yes, I think the council was brought up to date last meeting by Dr., Dr. Laura Smith. I'm going to call you doctor now. City Administrator Laura Smith with input from Penn Alimony, and I really appreciate all the work that's being done. Our next committee meeting is 10:31, and as we mentioned in that report, we'll be talking about changes to the application first off and reducing, looking at reducing the number of families overall. So I'll keep you updated on that. Thank you for subbing for me while I was gone. Again, everybody sub.
All right. And I don't have anything officially in my mayor's report for tonight, but then, but aligned with what Trent was saying, we have posted the Ward 1 vacancy. I believe that's open until November 15th. Ward 1 is generally the northernmost part of the city, but if you have questions, there's more information on the website relating to that posting. And then Laura, do you have any items you'd like to share with council tonight?
Great, though, because two, two weeks of short meetings, I know everybody appreciates. First of all, I would just like to say, I was sitting here listening to the council committee liaison reports, and it made me smile because I think back to when we started this a couple of years ago, and, and in some respects, how disconnected we felt oftentimes from our various boards and commissions, and to be able to hear you come and know that you're having those interactions and that that flow of information is going back and forth is really, I think, just helping strengthen our community and the volunteers that spend this time. So thank you for the commitment and the investment that you all have made and, anyway, it was, it was just nice to hear. I would also like to say, welcome back to Mayor Flora. It's good to have you back in that seat. So we'll look forward to transitioning slowly but surely back into kind of a full role. Councilmember Schmidt talked about the spooky walk. I would like to just remind you that there's no parking on site, but there are shuttle service available at the Broad, 5701 Broadmoor Office Building. Also, we have posted the Ward 1 vacancy. We will also be posting a Sustainability Commission vacancy. Ramsey Ataria has announced that they, he will be moving out of the city, and so we'll post that and look at that. We also have a board and commission survey out currently to the members who are up for reappointment this year, just sort of asking them some questions about what they feel has been the greatest accomplishment during this, their term. And so we'll share those survey results back. Everybody so far that has responded is interested in reappointment. So again, I think that speaks to the level of engagement and sort of the meatiness of the things that we're asking our boards and commissions to do. We have First Suburbs Coalition that we are hosting at the Powell Community Center on Friday. For those who may be attending, I had an email from Mark this morning. We, they have about 60 attendees who will be joining us. The focus of the agenda is really looking at housing, regional housing partnership report, and then kind of a panel discussion about opportunities to partner with faith-based organizations to look at housing strategies. But it's a great opportunity. Mayor Flora will be there to welcome everyone and kind of talk about some of the things that we have going on here in Mission. And it's a great opportunity for us to show off the community center and a lot of the investments that we've made. And then just a reminder, your calendar has said we have a work session next Wednesday, which we do not have an item for the work session, but we will have a work session on October 30th. We will also have, I spoke with the mayor, we've also, we'll have a special meeting ahead of that work session. So at 6:00 PM, we'll have a special meeting where the only item we'll consider will be the 2025 Employee Benefit Renewals that will allow HR and our employees a little bit more time to review the changes. We, we had a generally favorable, favorable renewal proposal that, that came in last Friday. So we would just ask you to do that as opposed to waiting till mid-November. And then the work session, which will be on the Block Tiff Project, is scheduled to start at 6:30. I think that's all I have. I would ask Justin to, oh, I, I do want to just make one comment. Thank you to Councilmember Josie and Ryer heard about the, the magazine. This was a fun issue and a, and a challenging issue because we have so many strong women entrepreneurs and women-owned businesses in this community. And so anytime we sort of take that foray into who are we going to feature, we run the risk of having somebody say, well, why not, you know, why not me? And so it was difficult decisions, and we wanted really just try to be able to showcase kind of an offering, but it certainly is not reflective of how we feel or the support that we want to be able to provide. And one of the things that we're working on is creating a category in our business directory on the website for women-owned businesses. So Robin put a call out several weeks ago, asking anybody who is interested in being featured or included in that. And so it's, it's a work in progress right now, but we hope to have that up and running soon, and I think that will be a great resource for us to continue to support. And then, so Justin can talk about September interim financials, and then I don't believe we have any business updates at this time. Oh, wait, I do have one thing. The chief should have thrown something at me. I, I appreciate the comment about the traffic enforcement. In fact, the chief and I were just talking about that on Johnson Drive, so I would ask him to just sort of share. He's kind of looked at some statistics for where we are year-to-date, and I thought it would be interesting to share with you all because I know that's been an area.
Thank you. We did some, now that we have new court software, we can kind of pull more data out than we have been able to in the past, and so that's been very valuable, but wanted to just pass on that so far this year, year-to-date, there's been 4,524 violations written citywide, and of those, 860 have been on Johnson Drive. So that's 19% of all violations. So, that's 19% of all violations written have been along Johnson Drive. So, the officers are really doing a good job of enforcing the traffic laws along, along that stretch, and I know that's important to all of you, so I wanted to pass that information along.
Good evening. Just for the September financial report, nothing too crazy to report. The revenues and expenditures really continue to mostly be in line with historical averages. I think the one thing I would note is now that we've officially put the budget to bed, and that includes both the, what we call the estimated current year budget and next year's budget, all have those numbers will be in here next month so that you can get a more apples-to-apples comparison based on the budget, the amended budget that was just passed and where we're at year-to-date. So, we can go into that in a little more detail if you all would like, but we'll have those numbers in there starting next month.
Great, thank you. All right, next would be an executive session, but we do not have need for an executive session this evening. So, before we adjourn tonight, I want to share with the public that the video from this meeting will be available through a link on our website at missionks.org. There being no further business tonight, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move them.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? All the, all those in favor say aye. We are adjourned.